So, I appreciate you all coming in. It's obviously the 10 o'clock session for the town hall meeting. So, thanks for taking the time out of your day. To start off, hi, I'm Randy Davis. I'm the CEO and President here. So, we can check the box that I've introduced myself, which has been some feedback in the past that we don't introduce ourselves. So, that's who I am. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. We do have a relatively concise session today that I hope you appreciate because that's the other feedback that we've got, that we're on your time and we completely understand that. And so, we need to get this thing in and out in under an hour if at all possible. So, we've worked to really try and distill it down to the information that's important to you and get it out there as quickly as possible so you can get about your day. So, I'd like to start off with just talking about some things that are public, press-worthy. And the very first one of those that should be on your radar is we have once again scored an A on the Leapfrog Survey. And why is that important? I like the Leapfrog Survey for several things. One, it's a very comprehensive scoring. It asks for a whole lot of information. One is, yes, it looks at our quality scores. It looks at readmissions, pressure ulcers, core measure adherence, all the things that we focus on each and every day. But the other thing that it asks about is what is your nurse staffing ratio? What is your physician involvement? What quality teams do you have and how do they run? Do you report to the board all the way up and down? Do people within your -- do you have town hall meetings? And it's a comprehensive grade across an entire organization, not only about are you hitting your quality scores or not, but how are you doing it? So, a Leapfrog A is actually very significant. So significant that if you'll notice, there's not a lot of other facilities that are an A. In fact, there's none in this area. It's hard to do. The great thing about Leapfrog though, and the reason that it's out there, is that it's a good comparison where we are, what are we doing, and it's forward-looking. Are you prepared to handle all these changes that are coming? Do you have the processes and mechanisms in place to handle them? We have received an A on Leapfrog ever since Leapfrog came out. So, what does that mean? That means that we didn't study for the test. We didn't sit down with Leapfrog Survey and go, "How do I check that box?" Because you didn't know. You didn't know how they were going to score you, what the criteria was. So, what has happened is we've been an A ever since that survey started coming out because of what we do, not because we tried to do it to get the grade. Understand the significance of that? It's grading what you already do. So, I, when the Leapfrog A comes out, I get to do the press release, I get to send it to the board, I get to go talk to the Rotarians and the Civitans and anyone that'll listen, I get to talk about it. I'm in the hospital nearly every day of the week. I'm in the hospital typically, you know, between the hours eight and five, depending on meetings, sometimes seven, sometimes later. Do you know the one thing that I will not do today? I will not touch a patient. I will not deliver care. Yet, the grade that I just talked about is absolutely around what we're doing in terms of the clinical performance and quality of this hospital. So, even though I get to stand in front of people and take credit, I get to applaud it and laud it, it has nothing to do with me because it's what you all do every single day. And so, I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you. Thank you for the commitment that you've made to absolutely do the best possible. Does that mean that we're perfect? No. But what it does mean is that we're performing in the top 2% of the nation. So, what else does that mean? Well, that means that the only way to compare yourself to anyone is to compare yourself to yourself because no one else is performing at your level. So, you don't have some hospital sitting out there and you're going, "We're going to beat them." But what have you all done? You've raised the bar and you've taken on the commitment to make sure that you continue getting better and you have a pursuit for perfection. Because frankly, y'all, that's about the only way to be better than what we are right now, is to be absolutely perfect in everything. And so, the other thank you that I need to make is understanding that when you have meetings and when you talk about how can we do better, that that's really the theme of every meeting. Because when you're only able to compare to yourself, then the only thing that you can talk about in a meeting is how you failed. And so, then it becomes like we're never really sitting down and going, "But wait, how did we do well?" But we're already doing so well that the only really legitimate way to run an efficient meeting and not sit there all day and list all the things that you're doing well in is to focus on where you failed. So, y'all understand and you've embraced it, that it is a relentless pursuit of perfection. And you're willing to do that and you're willing to sit in these meetings and go, "Okay, we know we're awesome, but where did we fail?" Because at the end of the day, every failure that comes in here is because it's a failure on a friend or a family. They're related to somebody here, as y'all know. So, thank you for that. Thank you because what it means is that you're continuing to raise the bar on yourself, which is one of the hardest things to do. It's easy, everyone has a competitive streak. It's easy to sit back and go, "I want to be better than that other group." But what you're having to say is, "I want to be better than I was yesterday." And you do that and you embrace it. So, thank you. Thanks for achieving greatness and allowing me to go out and talk about it and get all these people clapping every time I go to THA. I'm the Chair of the Quality Committee of Tennessee Hospital Association because of y'all. Which is funny because then they look at me and think that I have all the answers. I'm like, "I got a team that can help me out with that." So, the other public rating that's coming out is the CMS Star Rating. CMS Star Ratings, just to cut to the chase, we're going to be a three, a three-star hospital. Reason for that is that the CMS Star Ratings, they, you only have three scores that you can get on each criteria. It's above national average, national average, or below national average. Well, first of all, national average has a plus or minus rating on it that's huge. So, it's really tough to get, one, it's tough to be high or low on that, to get outside of that national average range that they're in. The other is when you look at us, let's say a readmission rate. Let's say that we're 1% better on our readmission rate than the national average. Well, that still just falls, even though it's better than the national average technically, it doesn't fall far enough outside of their corridor to be considered better than the national average. So, we get a three on that, on a five-point scale. So, essentially, what it does is it put, everyone's, every hospital's pretty good at core measures. They're sitting around, 95 to 97% of their patients that come through the door, they score. Well, we're 100. We get 100% on ours for a long period of time. But from a threshold standpoint, it's still considered at national average. So, when you can't really get any better than 100, it starts putting you in a situation. So, what ends up falling out is that the patient satisfaction scores are almost the only determining factor of who's going to be, what their star level's going to be. And so, what you tend to see, there's 256 hospitals that received a five-star rating. By the way, I'm not saying that we cannot achieve it. It's not at all what I'm saying. There are hospitals like us who have achieved a five-star rating. But what you primarily see is that the five-star hospitals are specialty hospitals without an emergency department and they are in select areas of the country, such as the Beverly Hills Hospital is a five-star. So, when it comes down to patient ratings, that's kind of where it is. I joked in the first session that the emergency department has come up with a plan to achieve five-star, but it requires opioid prescriptions and so, we're not going to go down that path. So, it is, we do have a plan if we have to, but it's not that important. All right. So, outside of that, because of the reputation that y'all have created within this hospital, we have patients coming to us in droves. Have you seen the census today? Yeah. So, it's a new set of challenges that you have when you're looking at patients in the emergency department because you're waiting on beds internally. The throughput challenges that come with that, basically, every inpatient area understands what it's like to be pegged at your max level for months and months and months. And so, we understand that. We understand the challenges that you're facing. And we have also seen a lot of changes with the hospitalist program as well, which are the physicians, obviously, that are taking care of that. We have a new physician coming on board, Dr. Neenaber. Dr. Neenaber is coming from Williamson Medical Center, but originally, he was in Paris, Tennessee, and he started the hospitalist program there, ran it as the medical director for about 10 years. Went to Williamson because of some changeover within their hospitalist groups in the different areas and has decided that he really, he likes the community hospital, the sole community provider aspect of it, and he likes being around, you know, open areas and wildlife. And so, he's wanting to come up here, run our hospitalist program. And we're very, very excited about Dr. Neenaber coming on board, so we'll get him introduced to everyone as he's here. With much sadness, I must report as well that Dr. Ryan Karasik was under a two-year employment agreement and August 10th, he will, his employment agreement is up. Due to some just family pressures, he is going to be moving to North Carolina, which is where his wife's family lives. And so, that is, that's where they're going. So, August 11th, I guess they'll be hitting the road and heading back there. I will tell you though, that if you run into him, feel free to help me recruit him to stay. We really, really like Dr. Karasik and feel that he's a true asset to the organization. So, you know, I'm not saying get in between him and family discussions, but you know, if you want to add in your opinion to him, feel free because we'd like to see him stick around. All right. So, with that said, again, it's just a heartfelt thank you. Thanks for, and you just make it to where I get to go around and talk to people and say great things and everyone's always excited to hear about what Northcrest is doing. And frankly, it is actually getting a little confusing because when I do go to those public forums, I get the, "Hey, congratulations on the award that you won." And I'm having to ask them, and I'm not trying to be arrogant about it, but I have to get which one, to which one are you referring? Y'all are winning them so fast that I'm having a hard time. I've got to talk to Rob about, okay, what press release went out and what did we do? And you know, just to stay on top of them. So, when it's confusing in the community, when you're going through the line at Walmart and they go, "Hey, congratulations on that award," and you go, "Oh, which one?" You know, that's a good problem to have. So, thank y'all for that because again, I don't do it. You do. With that said, I'll turn it over to Ms. Angie Beard. Thank y'all.
So, I'm Angie Beard. I'm the Chief Nursing and Clinical Officer. Big group. I want to talk to you just for a few minutes. Get the lights. You remember back in January, we talked about our goal and our aim for zero patient harm? And I wanted to let you know where we're at with that at the end of the first quarter. Our falls with injury at the end of the first quarter, we're at zero. Our claps, it's our central line associated bloodstream infections, we're at zero. Our urinary tract infections caused by catheters, we're at zero. Our facility-acquired pressure ulcers, we're at three. Our ventilator-associated events, we're at zero. Our surgical site infections, we're at zero. Our medication errors with injury are zero. Our elective deliveries at less than 39 weeks are at zero. Our health-acquired venous thromboembolism or blood clots are at zero. And then, our health-acquired CDF is at one. See, remember we talked about how several years ago, we thought it was unrealistic to have a zero patient harm goal? Look, and I'm showing you now that it is achievable and we can do it. We're not at zero yet, but what I do tell you is every time we have a failure, we sit down, we do a root cause analysis, we get everybody around the table and do a root cause analysis, and we try to figure out how did we harm that patient and how can we prevent that from happening again? And that's how we get better. So, it is, it is a goal that we have zero and I do believe that we'll get there. Okay? Now, I want to change gears just a little bit. Okay? I want to talk about appreciation. You know, we've had Mother's Day, we've had Nurses' Day, we've had Lab Week, we've had Hospital Week and all of this. And so, I was thinking, what is the common thread about all of this? And it's really about appreciation. So, I looked up the definition of appreciation and it's the recognition of the good qualities of someone or something. It's gratitude, thanks, gratefulness, and recognition. Okay? This is interactive. We're don't, this is different. This is not just me standing up here talking. We're all interactive. So, y'all, we're all going to do this together, okay? I need some nods. All right. Okay. And here's the great thing. I was just back there mingling in the back before we started doing this and Alan, Alan said, "Appreciate you." You know? And Jessica said, "I appreciate it." We don't realize how deep appreciation, the meaning of appreciation really is. So, some synonyms for our acknowledgement, recognition, realization, awareness, and So, I want to show you this. And when I show you this video clip, I want you to think about your work and your home life and kind of, I don't have Corey in this one. So, does that kind of describe us here at work sometimes? And how we feel? So, this is really, I really love this. It says, "The deepest craving of human nature is the need to be appreciated." We all need to feel appreciated. Who makes us feel appreciated? Spouse, children, parents, friends, your supervisor, your coworkers, or your customers or patients? This is interactive time. Who else? Who else makes us feel appreciated? Maybe our pets. Excuse me?
The public and general.
The public and general. This morning, I told, I'll tell you this story in just a minute. So, that's who makes it. I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel and did they feel appreciated? So, when do we feel appreciated? We've talked a little bit about that with all of our weeks that are going on and we have Mothers' and Fathers' Days, special occasions, specialty days, Hospital Week, Work Awards Day. We had that yesterday. Alan, Alan won an award. Who else won an award that's in here? Anybody? Alan, is that the only one in this group? Cardiopulmonary. That's, woo-hoo!
Nursing admin.
Nursing admin, woo! Exceptional work days and what others? What others? When do we feel appreciated? Where do we feel appreciated? At home, places of worship, school, clubs, friends, businesses, work, others? Where do you feel appreciated? Doug, you teach a, you have a Little League ball team, right? Do you feel appreciated?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So, there, that's where we feel appreciated. And how do we receive appreciation? Verbalization, thank you, appreciate you, as Alan pointed out. Written, notes, letters, Awards Day, our Stars Campaign, when we write out those little notes of appreciation to our peers and our coworkers. Physical, a hug or a smile. Don't hug Mr. Davis. Don't hug Mr. Davis. Good saying. Tokens, flowers, gifts, food, others? What else? How do you receive appreciation? Now, let me tell you a little story. So, it's my husband's birthday. So, I clean house and I go to the grocery store and I fix supper. I cook supper. Now, for you that know me, that is special. I went out of my way. I really went out of my way. So, we're sitting there eating and I said, "Well, how's your steak?" I grilled steak. I said, "How's your food?" And he said, "Well, it's a little overdone for what I like and, you know, but it's great, but you know, it's a little more done than what I like." So, several days later, he asked me what's wrong. Yeah, several days. I felt unappreciated. And I said, "Well, I'm mad at you." And he said, "Why are you mad?" And then, I told him why I was mad. And I said, "I feel like you didn't appreciate what I did." He said, "I said, 'Thank you.'" I said, "Well..." Well, he said, "Well, what did you want? What did you expect me to say? What did you expect?" I said, "Well, I don't know." And he said, "Well, if you don't know, how do you expect me to know?" I said, "Well, that's a good point." So, I think about that often here at work and I think, like, if we call and ask you, "Can you come in and work another shift? Can you work overtime today?" "Yes." Well, how do we feel appreciated? How do you, how do we feel, how do we tell you we appreciate that? You know, the patients appreciate it, but you know, and then you get mad. I mean, I've been here for 30 years and I don't know how many times I've said, "I'm not going to do that again. Nobody even cares." Nobody, nobody cares. Nobody appreciates me. I'm not going to do that again. But I didn't do it for the appreciation to begin with, but I'm expecting my boss to show me appreciation and I don't even know what I want. Am I, are y'all with me? I need some nods. So, when you say, "Nobody appreciates what I do," well, what do you want? How do you want me to show you that I appreciate you? Well, I don't know. Because for some people, it's a written thank you note. For some people, it's just knowing in their heart they did the right thing. So, it's kind of like when you help a little old lady across the street, because that's what you're supposed to do, and she doesn't say, "Thank you," do you kick the cane out from under her? But that's what we tend to feel like we should do because we're not appreciated. You didn't appreciate me helping you. Yeah, right? But appreciation is not money. If I come in and work that extra shift, I get paid my wages for what I, my work. I get paid what I did for my work. That's what I earned. I earned my money because I worked. That's what I'm supposed to do, right? We pay you for coming in and working extra, right? But that's not appreciation. I see you giggling back there. But that's not appreciation. Appreciation is maybe somebody saying, "Thank you." Maybe it's your coworker. But then, I have to look inside myself and say, "Do I do that enough?" And I don't. I don't say, "Thank you" enough and I don't tell people I appreciate them enough. So, my goal is to be better at that. Trade your expectation for appreciation and the world changes instantly. One more story about my daughter. Now, my daughter started driving and I give her a car. It's a used car, but I give her a car. Fully paid for, here's your car. And she says, "I wanted a new car." I said, "You can drive that or you can walk." She's driving that car to this day, but her expectations were higher than they should have been. She had too high of expectations. So, she did not feel, I did not feel that she appreciated the car I gave her because her expectations were higher than mine. Sometimes do we have unrealistic expectations? She had a very unrealistic expectation. But sometimes we, at work, we have those too. We have unrealistic expectations, right? So, after I told Princess to take her tiara off and lower her expectations, she, as I said, drives that car to this day, so. So, in summary, we've discussed who, when, where, and how. So, what are your expectations of appreciation? Some people will go out here and get their cup for Employee Week and they will be very appreciative of that. Some people will go out here and complain about their cup and say, "This is all they gave me," right? How are you going to feel for appreciation? That's up to you. Okay? Interactive time? Anybody got any thoughts? Anybody want to talk? Think about customer loyalty. Connie in a previous meeting talked about going to Kroger and how she feels appreciated when she goes to Kroger. So, she continues to go back to Kroger. Our patients come here because we are getting more and more patients. And why? Because we appreciate them. We appreciate their business. We appreciate them choosing us, right? So, appreciation, we can apply that to anything. Now, going back to that first slide I showed you where we had the zero patient harm, that's our goal, that's you all. You all did that and we appreciate you for doing that. And the patients appreciate you. More than that, the community appreciates you. The community may not always show us how much they appreciate us, but the community does appreciate us. They may not come in here as a group and say, "We appreciate all you do," but this community appreciates the healthcare that we provide because we provide good quality And thank you.
My name is Kim Pridgen. I'm your what?
CFO.
Oh, my gosh, y'all are awesome. Yes, I am your CFO. You might know what that means, really. Okay, that's my title. I worry about the money. Ding ding ding. I worry over our money. I do. That is my job. That's why I have to get my hair colored every now and then. I probably shouldn't put that on tape. Too much, I never get my hair colored. So, Angie talked about appreciation and how do we appreciate you? Well, it's hard for an organization to do that, right? See the building, hug you and how do we make you feel appreciated? Well, we talked about how you earn your wages, right? Well, there are other things that a corporation will do for you. They will give you a benefit. So, it adds a value to the work that you do. Who has health insurance? You have to have it, right? Have to have it, just like you have to have clothes, food, and shelter, you have to have it. Well, guess what else you need? How many of you participate in our retirement? Like it. We need more of those. Only 31% of our organization participates in retirement. Only 31%. 69% of us, then, guess what's going to happen when we get looking like that? Yeah. You think Social Security is going to cover that for us? Let's not talk about politics or who's, ugh. But do you really think they're going to take care of us? No, you have to do it yourself. So, retirement is a benefit to you. So, let's talk about what that means. This is based on a $30,000 a year salary. So, figure out where you are in that. We'll change the numbers. If you save 4% of the money that you earn, and remember, this is at a $30,000 rate, you're contributing $1,200. Is retirement before tax or after tax? So, what does that mean?
You don't pay taxes.
Taxes, I do not have to pay taxes. For this particular person, how much are they saving in tax? $180. Who would you rather pay, the government or yourself?
Yourself.
Yeah, yeah, me too. So, really, the impact of them contributing $1,200 is what? Only $1,020. That's truly the impact. You know what the other impact that I have not put up there is? Can you think of what the other impact is that you're leaving on the table? We call it money on the table. I'm sorry?
Compound interest.
There's interest. There's also the match. Northcrest gives a match. So, not only are you paying the government $180, you're not even getting the benefit that the organization gives you by matching. We're talking about $20 a week. For a $30,000 employee, we're talking about $20 a week. I really need you to think about where you are in your retirement. Because guess what? Do we get younger or older? Every freaking day. We had some pencils that dropped earlier and you should have heard the groaning and groaning as we've been down to get them. It's a benefit to you. We appreciate you. How do we do that? We offer benefits. We need you to take advantage of them. That's what they're here for, is for you, to help you plan for your retirement, your future. Because we're all going to look like those old people. My husband does, I don't. Also, on the subject of appreciation. Also, on the subject of appreciation, to appreciate somebody, you have to know what they did, right? Because how can you say thank you when I didn't know what you did? What'd you do today? What happened? So we need to thank our leader, Randy Davis, won with YMCA the Robertson County Volunteer of the Year. Yeah, he kept it from everybody. But we have our ways. Any questions for me, before I turn it over to the fun part, which is, you know, Angie? We talked about the cowlick and why he wears hair gel. Yeah, I'll turn that over to Randy, you can ask him about the style and all that now.
You can finish that slot.
Oh, really?
So before we turn off the filming, just so it's caught. One thing that had been asked as we had, by the way, no one had sent us any suggestions. Janice said exactly what you wanted to hear. But a rumor that we had heard was that we needed to touch on funding of pension and raises. We're one Town Hall too early, just to let you know. So if you were waiting to hear for that, that's going to be next Town Hall. We're still in the budget process, and so we don't have that ready. But we will address it in the next Town Hall, once the budget's done. So we're still compiling estimated volumes and service lines and performance and all these kind of things. So we'll bring that to the next one. So I didn't want to leave that unaddressed. So with that said, we will wrap up the taping and ask for any questions, and then do our mandatory fun.